All right, it's Monday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty four. And Adrian Johnson is sitting in for Dr. Ackerman, who will not be with us tonight. And I'm calling the curriculum committee meeting to order. So the first order of business is to review the October twenty first meeting minutes.
I had looked at them and I thought they're accurate.
Yep, all right, I agree. So we'll move on. So second item or third item, the new Fitch course proposal, IB core English or eleven, twelve core English. So introduce yourself and let us know what you got for us.
Sure, I can assist in principal Fitch join online with Jess Donnakin, the English Department Chair.
Chris Moore, the English teacher at Fitch High School and the IB diploma coordinator.
All right, all right, yeah, go ahead.
Great, so the course that we are going to share with you today is IB English standard level. Currently, we offer IB English high level. And what one thing that we're trying to do is open up the IB program pathway just to more students to cast a wider net. I think that there are sometimes students that might be a bit hesitant before they're ready and willing to challenge themselves for more rigorous classes, so offering the standard level class for English in grades eleven and twelve kind of bridges the gap to the students that might be shying away from taking on a challenge of an IB diploma and giving them more access if obtaining the diploma was something that they really wanted to try for. So I know that we talk so often about different, I think, active things we can do to attract our students to the IB program. And we just thought that this was one practical step that we could take as a department. Because as you know, each student needs four years of English to graduate. So we thought that by offering standard level English to students in grades eleven and twelve, we could be casting a wider net. Hopefully increasing enrollment for our diploma candidates and also career pathway.
So that would say that I think there's two additional benefits. One, the career related program at Fitch is something we're really trying to get moving and get off the ground. And it's designed to attract a type of student that maybe doesn't want to do the full diploma program with the six courses and the theory of knowledge. For the career related program, you have to do two IB courses. So an IBHL literature class might be intimidating for a lot of those students, whereas the SL class might be a lot more accessible. And the other advantages is we want to offer, so right now, our higher level course offerings for eleventh and twelfth grade in the English Department are literature based. The course we are proposing is IB language and literature, which is a lot more focused on how language is used in the real world. So we, we still read novels in the course, but it's a lot more about speeches and communications and advertisements. And it has actually become the more popular IB option worldwide because it is so much more accessible for all students, not just those who are purely interested in literature. So it seems like a nice way to really widen our offerings in the English Department.
All right, and then can you explain the difference between the high level and what is it, standard?
Standard level.
Yeah.
So the higher level English, the higher level courses in IB are supposed to be two hundred and forty hours. So they have to be two years in length and they have more rigorous exams at the end and tend to have another assessment added in. So in English, for example, we have, there's four components that go into your IB experience. You have a, what's called the HL essay, which is a literary analysis essay that we draft in class with the students, they pick their own topics. And we go through the drafting process and they produce an essay at the end, which gets sent off to IB for assessment. There's an individual oral where the students choose a global issue of their, of their choice. And they use two of the works that we've studied in class together. And they put together a ten minute long oral presentation that they do one on one with the teacher, and then there's a question and answer period after that. And then in the spring of their senior year, they take their IB exams, which are over the course of two days. There is the paper one exam where they get a piece of prose and they have an hour, roughly an hour and fifteen minutes to write an essay on that. A piece of poetry or drama, an hour, roughly an hour and fifteen minutes to write an essay on that. And the next day we come back, we do paper two, where they choose any two books that we have studied together over the previous two years. There's a series of four questions, they choose one of the questions in any two books that they want. And they write their, they write their essay on that. At the standard level, that's, yes.
I, I thought you'd said there are four things, I was wondering how to count up to four on that. So the high level last jury, essay, sorry. The individual oral and then the IB exams that, because it's two.
Yeah, paper, so paper one, which is two essays, counts as one component. And then paper two, which is one essay, counts as the fourth component.
Thank you.
Yep, and they're all roughly twenty to thirty percent at all of the course grade. For SL, the requirement is, there's a much shorter hour requirement. We can, ideally, those courses would be a year and a half, but given the way our schedule works, we can do them within the scope of a single year. They have three components, they, we don't do the HL essay in the SL courses. So there's the oral presentation that they would do, same requirements. And then in the spring, they do the two exams, but paper one is only one essay instead of two. So we are, instead of, at the HL level, we study nine works right now. At the SL level, we would only have to study four. So instead of doing nine over the course of two years, we can do four over the course of one year and be prepared for the exams in the spring and still do the individual orals and meet all of our requirements.
All right, one thing I was reading, and it says that it's supposed to be a hundred and fifty teaching hours for the SL, and I counted it up and it seems like we have a hundred and twenty.
So we've done this with some of our other SL classes. We've had, we've have other SL classes that have run in a single year. IB global politics is an example, and I think there might be one other that we've done.
The math is in standard level too.
Yeah, it's not, again, in an ideal world, if we had a schedule that operated differently, if we, you know, if we could run like credit and a half classes through, throughout the court, or credit and a quarter classes throughout the year, that would be the ideal situation. But after talking, I've been to a lot of conferences and talking with IB schools around the country. A lot of time, a lot of schools kind of make it work. That's one of the nice things about IB is they have these recommended requirements of what we, they hope you can do. But the understanding is there is that not everybody has that flexibility of scheduling. And we feel pretty confident that we could cover the four works, do the oral presentation and do the course justice within the course of a year.
All right, so you're just going to try to compress it down a little bit, but still cover the same amount of information more?
Yeah, I, again, I think that if, again, if we, if I could, if we were in magical Christmas land and I could wave my magic wand, I would love to find those thirty extra hours in the schedule. But just the way our block scheduling operates, it's just not, it just, there's no, I don't think there's a practical way for us to do that. So we have, again, we've done it before, global politics is an example of a course that we've done that in. Our kids still score fine in the global politics class, they're still able to cover the entire curriculum. So as long as we are purposeful in our planning and our writing of the curriculum, I don't think we would have any issue meeting all the requirements.
All right. Yeah, I mean, as far as, you know, there, there'd been some, you know, some, you know, talk by the board members about offering honors level class. And in doing a bunch of research on the SL, it seems like it's more of an AP level class. I went to UConn's website today and they, they accept a huge change from two years ago when I checked, they were at like, I don't know, six IB classes they accepted, it's thirty seven now. So it's, I think it actually might be more than AP, but, which is great, but seventeen of those were SL classes. So it seems like these SL classes are at that similar high level, it's just one year of it rather than two, is it, I mean, is that pretty accurate?
Um, I think that's up to each individual school, like the standard level classes are, are from the IB philosophy are not supposed, are not as rigorous as the higher level ones are. That's why they have.
It's going to access it.
They're, they're supposed to be the more accessible version. Again, if we were in a magical Christmas land here, all I would, you know, I think, I would like to see a lot more of our kids taking these classes. So I don't know how we, defining things as honors versus AP. I know that's something we have to figure out for our grading policy here. But the SL classes in the ideal world should be more accessible to, like, you know, kids who are going to go into the liberal arts in college, I wouldn't think, or especially in people might want to be English majors than the HL literature class, or kids who like really love to read. The HL literature class would certainly be the way to go. But for a, a student who wants that, kind of that next level of what we offer at Fitch High School beyond the, you know, college English eleven experience, I think the SL class offers that higher level of rigor, but it's not as intense as an HL class or an AP literature class would be. Now, what UConn, so UConn does offer SL credit if you do the whole diploma program. That's one of the caveats there is, if you just take, if you're just what we call a course kid and you only take, you know, a couple of IB courses, they will only take your HL courses at UConn. If you do the full diploma though, you, they'll give you credit for the SL classes. I think that's the, the understanding, the diploma as a whole is what has its value and that there is a balance between the SL and the HL courses. So I don't think UConn would say that IB, the HL and SL, even if they give the same course credits for the HL and SL classes. I think that's only because the, I, I don't think that they would say that those courses are inherently the same value. But by doing the full diploma, they understand that you've already got your three, maybe you're taking an HL math and HL science and HL theater arts, you can only take SL classes from there. So the fact that you're doing the whole diploma maybe raises the SL value in their estimation and puts it on that same level. But I don't think the class is supposed to be at the same rigor level as an HL.
And it kind of recognizes multiple intelligences, you know, kids who do a diploma program, they, maybe their proclivities are more in the language arts area and less in the math. So we have a lot of kids in the diploma program who've taken the standard level math, for instance, or vice versa. So, you know, doesn't mean that every diploma kid is, is terrific at everything, although we do have some kids that are pretty much on a lot of different things, so.
So it's the intent from, from this, and I think what you're saying is that this IB language and literature SL would be offered at an honors level in terms of courses at Fitch?
Okay, I think that's, that's definitely something that we've talked about because one of the things that we're thinking is that this course could bridge a gap that we may see, and there are a lot of students that may not yet be reaching up. So what we're hoping is that this gives students an opportunity to reach up.
So I'm guessing you wouldn't see it offered as a college prep level course? And so is it, it's, so my understanding of the weightings, I think that IB and AP have the same weightings at, at Fitch. IB, I guess it's high level, I always just thought of it as IB, but so, so is it possible to have that same weighting as an AP? Is that something you're considering or?
I think that one of the things that Chris has shared is that it, it does seem to be a different level of work. The expectations for the students in the SL class are a bit different in terms of intensity, in terms of pacing, in terms of
Time.
sophistication of time, of course, thank you. And also like sophistication of like what the students might actually be generating in terms of their writing. So we, I think the general feel with the department, because this was a department conversation and Jess can, you know, pipe in when, when she wants because she is online. I do think that the general feel of the department was that this course provides an opportunity to, to students that maybe don't feel quite ready for the AP or the IB level. They may not necessarily yet see themselves as students that are ready for that. So our hope is that a course like this creates an opportunity for them to start seeing themselves like this and also gives them those transferable skills, the writing skills that Chris was talking about when he described the SL class to us.
Communicating.
Yeah.
So, so pin you all down on this honors level? Or what are the other options if not?
Do you mind if I ask a quick question? Hi. Hello, this is Jess Donnakin, English Department Head, I see you all. So are you asking about our grading policies and moving forward? If this is going to be an honors level course is that what you're referring to? Because we don't have any honors level courses per se at the high school. So I'm just asking, is it just about grading?
I'm, I'm confused with that actually, because there's honors chem, for instance.
In the, in the English department. We have our, our higher level courses, the AP and AP UConn and then the IB courses. But for our English Department, we don't have like an honors level. So I didn't know if you were just referring to whether or not our grading policy would be different between this and say a college prep or this and an IBHL class.
The grading policy, what I'm asking about right now, the grading policy in as much as the weighting that's given to the, to the course, because different levels, I, I know AP and IB, I believe, have this, well, IB higher level, I guess, have the, the same weighting. And then honors has somewhere in between that college prep and that. That's what I'm asking.
Are all IB, IB courses weighted the same way as AP courses, whether they're standard or high? So it gives them an on-ramp, so you can consider that like honors, but they're still getting more leverage for that course, and that's how the universities see it too.
So, so all I, so, so actually, I was going to ask this question anyway. I, I think you mentioned we already have IB standard level courses in Fitch.
Yes.
And which ones are those or just give an example if you?
We have, I, like our Spanish and French classes, physics. You can take IB psych at the HL or SL level. Sometimes we do, with some of our classes, you have the option, they're in the same class, but that you can do SL or HL depend. And then depending on which road you take, you have different assessments, or maybe you have extra projects if you're doing the HL version, just because of the limitations of our scheduling and numbers.
So, so those get the, so all IB courses currently offered at Fitch get that same weighting in, in a GPA that a, than an AP course would? And, and then, and then the expectation is this would, would be as, as well?
I think one of the things, one of the things that Jess was trying to share in, in some of those other departments, there are other, for grades eleven and twelve, there are honors options.
Yeah.
In the English Department, in grades eleven and twelve, there are not honors options.
Correct.
We do see this class as something that could offer the honors option in English in grades eleven and twelve.
So in terms of GPA calculation, honors has a different
Correct.
weighting. So I'm wondering what this class would have, would have that honors level, so honors chem?
That's, that's what I think, that's what I think, because in, in other departments, there are, there are honors, there are some honors choices. The English Department currently in grades eleven and twelve.
Yeah.
They may get more credit for it, so we really have to look into that.
Yeah, because I
And I, I do think it is, it's still open, it's still open.
So I fully support.
I would definitely say so. I don't, I don't know that we can, I don't know that we should give a definitive answer as of just yet. It hasn't been something that has been discussed amongst, you know, all the parties involved. But there wouldn't be any reason to go against the, you know, traditions and what we have going on with our other departments. So I would, like Amy, assume that we would go with what is similar in other departments because they do have that bridge there to fulfill this academic gap, and also this is kind of a new bridge. It's opening different doors, it's not just filling a gap and letting students who maybe aren't ready for an AP or IBHL course. It, it is doing that, it's great, but it's also going to open the door for our IB diploma program students. It's going to help those kids who don't need another HL class, but they still want to do the diploma. So it's, it's going to fulfill many avenues, which yes, it's going to make it different from some courses. But we're definitely going to have to stick with the grading and weighting that has been put in place across the other departments.
So, so that's why, so I think then if it is listed as an IB course, so I'm understanding now is it would have that same weighting as every other IB course, otherwise that would create confusion. So I see the intent here, I, I see, I see how it helps IB diploma and giving more options. I'm unsure if it, well, I guess by definition, it's, it's not necessarily giving another honors level course, which is the gap that, that's identified in the, the rationalization.
I think the work level though is the step, the ramp up, that it is like taking an honors, but they're just getting, I guess, more at the university level when they see that.
It's, it seems like it's like a step beyond honors, like in terms of the weighting that's offered.
Well, the, but I think the work is pretty similar, right?
If I can jump into, so if you look at the state's accountability index and how they weight courses, they weight all IB courses the same, so students are given credit regardless of what type of IB course. It's weighted the same for, in terms of how we're given credit when students take IB courses and AP courses. And so I'm assuming that that consistency again would be, would be important.
Yeah, I agree with that. My other question is, I guess, a couple, but so right now we have the two year, so, so, so one thing, this IB language and literature SL for eleventh and twelfth grades, they can't take it repeat. It's just they can take it either in the eleventh grade or twelfth grade?
Well, our plan would be that the eleventh and twelfth grade courses would be discreet, different courses that would have different texts and units associated with them. So opening up a lot of, giving us a lot of options there. So a student takes that option their junior year and then decides, you know, this is, I, I really like this, I want more of this. They can take it again their senior year and they are allowed to retest, all right? IB does give them, if they want, so they would take their exam junior year for that course. And if they wanted to, they could test again senior year, that's a thing that IB allows. If they wanted to go, they, you know, use that as kind of their on-ramp to those higher level courses or those higher level AP IB level courses, and they wanted to do AP literature their senior year, they would be, they could, they could do that. Or depending if, and if they might be able to jump to the IBHL literature course their senior year. So we're
Pathways, more pathways.
Yeah, by adding that one option there, we're because once a kid, once a kid, right now, if a kid decides to take college English eleven, there is almost no way they are moving to a higher level course their senior year. I, I would be shocked if that happens ever. So this would provide that, that maybe that middle ground and open up some options. But yeah, our, our plan would be to have the, the eleventh and twelfth grade courses be different. And then kind of vice versa, if a kid takes AP English eleven and decides, you know what, I, this is not the pathway I want to go down. The IB English SL would be there for them senior year versus right now. Like I teach college English twelve and I have every year, get a number of students who were AP eleven students junior year, decided that for whatever reason, they didn't want to continue along. And then they come to college English twelve and it's a pretty drastic difference between, from college English to AP. So this provides maybe a little bit of a buffer, a little bit of a, an in-between there.
Okay, and to add to that, it also allows the student that maybe isn't quite ready to level up in the eleventh grade year to decide in the twelfth grade year that they want to try for the first time and, and go into SL, and there would be a place for that student. Right now, as, as Chris implied, they can still move pretty freely, we don't have prereqs, right? They can still move pretty freely throughout the levels. In English, it's not like other more sequential contents. However, it, it is a much greater challenge to move from a CP level eleven to an AP or an IB level twelve. And I think that this gives maybe the student that was just still growing up, and that's a lot of high school kids, a chance, a chance before they exit high school to actually try a class that will challenge them.
And that's what I think we're hearing from board members and some families, like where is the, the ramp or where's the pathway going from college level at ten to eleven and twelve?
Or honors level, because so just to clarify, we do offer honors level at nine and ten. Right, it disappears for eleven and twelve. So, or just continue on, I mean, has there been any talk about, you know, what we've kind of mentioned as a board, adding honors classes into the English Department and, and elev, grades eleven and twelve?
I think that we were thinking that this, this course could fulfill that. If, if that was something that the state would allow, that this course could, could indeed fulfill that if that was allowed. I don't know if this course would exist in addition to an honors eleven or an honors twelve, because I don't know in terms of the rigor, in terms of the level of work, how very different they would be. I do think that they would be so similar.
So you, you'd cross-list it, or is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying I'd cross-list it, I don't think that we would offer four, four different types of junior English.
So I had a question, so we have the wonderful IB grant just recently. And I was wondering how grants, that grant funding might pair with this proposed course.
It would absolutely support the training of the teacher. That's probably the biggest expense is the training of the teacher. And the ability to even write some curriculum, you know, to get it mapped out the way we need it mapped out. So I don't know that there's supplies, but of course, when we were at the Dodea in Virginia, they were talking to us about other, because they see how systemic our grant system has been in the eight grants that we've received, and they were talking about equipment and supplies that could marry with some of these things that might be a nice next step. So they're even offering us suggestions now. So, you know, there could be other ways that we could help support.
I have one question if I may. So students that would want to take this and then they're taking the SL level, do we offer as a senior option the ECE course for UConn at that, we do. And so that may be an option then too for kids that, you know, they enjoyed the standard level. And maybe I may or may not want to, as an option, maybe I don't want to go into AP, I don't know, are your AP and, and and ECE dual classes combined? Oh, they're duly enrolled. So, you know, maybe that's, that's my next option is that I would either want to take the AP ECE combined, or then I could go into the higher level is what you're saying.
And I think even IB and ECE have done some work together in collaborating those.
We're working on that right now, because the, the UConn dual enrollment is a very natural fit for what IB's goals are. So it's right, frankly, we, so Jess Donak and I both applied last year, but we hadn't neither, we hadn't taken. The only holdup from UConn's end was that we didn't have the graduate course, the rhetoric course, teaching course that was required. Jess took it over the summer, so she's all set. So we're hoping when the application process opens up again, Jess will reapply, get everything. And then our IB course, the ones that Jess is teaching, will be dual enrolled with UConn.
So, so that, so right now, my understanding for at least grade twelve is this AP slash ECE English. And then IB is right now separate from that?
Correct.
And then with the intent then to just, would AB ECE IB, is that like?
Still be two different classes, but the students that are taking IB hopefully will get a UConn credentialed class.
So it's like two, two routes to ECE?
Yes.
My gosh.
Exactly, and, and honestly, we would, we would love that.
Yeah.
We would love that, you know, we, we, we think that UConn is going to support that, we just have to wait it out, they have a process that we have to go through.
And so, so I, I think from that answer, the answer to this next question is yes. Are you still planning on offering the English high level IB? If the standard level IB gets approved?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. Absolutely.
So, but the high level is? So, but the high level is, would be two years. So you'd have to start that at the beginning of your junior year. So this isn't a ramp into the high level class. This is just a uh, um, standard level class.
That's not what I heard you say.
I'm gonna. Could be. Um, that, so that depends on, that would, that would be a decision that we, that we would have to make. Is if we wanted that pathway to be available. There is nothing at, on the IB level that would stop us, that would prevent us from, from doing that. The IBHL assessments take place during senior year. So we could construct an 11th grade class that covers um, the, enough, the material, enough material that would allow the students to then their senior year uh, do that. It gets a little complicated from a, a planning standpoint, but it is a possibility if that is something we wanted to do.
So I'm still new on this.
Can I interject for one second? Can I, hi, okay, sorry. Um, I just want to add on to the answer to that question a little bit. Um, what you were asking was can a student who's taking IBHL their um, or IBSL their junior year go into the IBHL their senior year? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, well, you couldn't start the HL. So does the first year of HL equivalent, equivalent to this?
So you couldn't start the, the HL stuff per se. But a student who is taking IBSL in their junior year is prepared and could take the assessments, um, including completing the HL essay. That is mostly an independent situation that is only looked at by the instructor one time. Um, the individual oral could be completed their senior year if need be. And their two exams are always completed senior year. So there's no real hindrance there between them transferring grades, uh, transferring courses or upping a level, you know? Um, it is possible. We've had students from um, college prep level courses in 11th grade or in AP 11 who have had interest in this. So we looked into it to say like, okay, well, how could this work? Because, you know, they didn't complete the first half of this, maybe. It would be easier for them to transfer into the IBHL if this new course got approved. This would make it easier for those students to transfer to the IBHL during their 12th grade year if they saw fit.
And I think to add what Jess said, if a student demonstrates the readiness and the motivation, we would, I think as teachers, stay attuned to that and suggest that they do. Um, because why not? Why not try that? Why not challenge yourself even more if you're ready? Sometimes for certain students, in many cases, the ability is there and the confidence is not. So hopefully this SL class would help build that confidence. Similar to the way students have math confidence, they have writing confidence too. Um, so you know, again, not just bridging a gap, but like opening a pathway that they maybe didn't see for themselves as a second semester sophomore. And remember also like how young our students are, um, when they do course selection, it's, it's February, February of sophomore year. And that seems like a really young time to think about where you'll exit high school. So we just kind of hope that if nothing else, this kind of broadens their horizons a little bit.
I'm super excited about the way our staff, administration and teachers have taken this on instead of back in the day. You know, 10 years ago or whatever, it was more gatekeeping. Now, especially with the way that the board has designed policy, they really, it's more about making more access and more encouraging of kids to try to level up. And I see more confidence in our kids. I mean, our kids were saying, how come more kids like me aren't in these classes? So our underrepresented kids are showing up more readily. And all of our kids are feeling, I think, a little more brave to take on more challenges. And that makes me really proud. But that's been the work with the board, with policy too, that's helped out. But it's also been the encouragement, I think, from staff, counselors and seeing these as opportunities for kids, encouraging them.
I, I have just three very quick questions. First two are student numbers. Roughly, how many students total are in uh, the IB English HL right now? So that's 11th and 12th grade. Uh, then um, roughly, uh, what's the ballpark estimate for how many students you'd expect to have in um, the standard level courses? And then my third one is, is the standard level version offered at any other public high school in this state right now?
So in terms of numbers at the, for seniors, we have about between 20 and 25 in the IBHL English 12. Jess has somewhere between 30 and 35 in the 11th grade class. AP hundred-ish?
Yeah, I definitely, I think of that in terms of like sections. So
How many?
Right now in AP, in each grade, we have at least five or six sections each. So five or six sections of AP Yukon in grade 11.
Oh, I was wondering about what, what you envisioned for.
I, I think, I think we would probably be able to draw at least two sections. I think we'd be able to enroll two sections in grade 11.
That would be my estimate as well, because you might have.
For the SL class.
And that might be some of your college level kids or your honors and who weren't really thinking they could be ready. You know, from 10 to 11. I think that'll be the draw.
That'd be like 40 to 50 in 11th grade, uh, senior year. What are you thinking?
I think senior for next year would be tough, because I don't know how.
No, no, I'm just, I'm going forward, not, not, not.
Assume a similar number, because you might have some kids who filter down, some kids who come up. So my assumption would be a prob, it would probably even out to be about the same.
So, so that, that two-section idea would be.
Yeah, I do think so.
Yeah, because right now between AP and IB, somewhat about 50 to 60% of our population takes a higher level English class. So, you know, if we could push that up to maybe like 65, 70%, um, get some of those kids who would normally do college 11. And I'm sure we might, you know, there's some kids who maybe in the past would have taken IBHL 11 or AP 11, but now having this other option gives them maybe a more appropriate path that's going to keep them in those higher level courses versus maybe the frustration that they might appear. And then they drop down to college 12 senior year. So I think it just, I would, I think um, two sections, and I bet, I would, I would bet good money that it would increase the percentage of kids we have taking the AP IB courses in junior and senior year overall.
Oh, and then my last question um, was, do you know if this is offered anywhere else in the state? There are not that many IB public schools in the state, but I was wondering if this is, this is taught.
There are. I would have to check to see if they have SL. I know that there are four or five other schools in the state. Some of them do offer Lang and Lit. I don't know off the top of my head, but that is something I could find out pretty easily.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And I could even reach out to my DODIA colleagues, because many of our military impacted schools have IB. They have NROTC, they have IB, they have some of those things that we have. But we were, they were talking at the conference about both the SL and the HL. So, but I could find out more about what that looks like.
So how many kids got the IB diploma last year?
Last year of the, we had 11 or 12 candidates for the diploma. And I believe eight got the, got the diploma, seven or eight got the full diploma.
All right. And then um, do you tell kids going in that the credits aren't likely to be um, directly transferable to college, like to Yukon?
What do you mean?
Well, so you said that the credits will only go if you get the diploma.
For your SL classes, your HL classes, they will take regardless of whether, the HL courses are just like AP in nature, where those will almost, pretty much any school you talk to will take HL, I, um, IB credits. The SL credits are, if the school will take them, it's usually attached to the IB diploma. Although IB put out a bulletin recently that the, I get this acronym wrong. Basically, an organization that advises colleges on what courses they should be giving credit for. They asked this organization to do an audit of all the IBHL and SL courses. And one of the recommendations that came out of that was that colleges should be offering credits for the, for the SL classes as well. Now, how long that takes to filter down? Who knows? But that was a, a big news point that came out of the organization recently. So when I go, when I talk to, and I go in the spring, when I go around and talk to students about doing the IB diploma program, I am very clear that the HL cour, the, again, but in my eyes, the true value of the doing the diploma program, the college credits are a nice aspect. Striving for the diploma and doing that is where the real value is, that that is preparing you for college. You're learning how to do research with the extended essay. You're doing the community service, you're doing the activity with CAS, you're going through these higher level courses that are very project-based. They're not asking you to fill out a bunch of multiple choice questions that are asking you to collaborate. So the experience you get and the preparation for college is where the real value lies. But I'm very upfront about in terms of when it comes for college credit, you need to look at the colleges that you are most interested in. But I use Yukon as a great example, because so many of our students do go on to Yukon, is that doing the full diploma, you, we've had students, multiple students have gone there in recent years with 25 to 30 credits, because they do the full diploma program and they get credit for their HL courses, their SL courses. And then there's usually an AP course or two sprinkled in there. Um, because they did, you know, AP US history their sophomore year, and maybe they did like an AP Gov class in there as well.
And our kids who come back say they are super prepared for college, that they feel like they're so ahead of the game in being able to take on the rigor and the workload at college, because they feel like they've already had some of that in high school, where they can go home at night and get a home-cooked meal. But at college, they're lucky to get into the dining room and find something they like, but they have the same level. So I have heard that. I've heard it from parents at Mystic Market will say to me, oh my goodness, it was like such a smooth transition. So.
So I guess, I guess my, my reservation is just that um, that middle level class. Like, so I have a friend that, that teaches at East Liman. I believe he told me that they only allow kids to take three or maybe four AP classes. Um, so they don't let them load up like, like kids do here. Um, you know, with, I think my son took seven his senior year. Um, really high level classes, which um, introduces a tremendous amount of stress. So um, so having that like slightly lower option, I mean, this is what we were talking about at, at the board.
Yeah.
Having that slightly like lower option or a little bit easier to lighten the load. And for a lot of those kids that might be able to handle two or three AP classes, having more offerings, not just in English, but, but certainly in English. Um, you know, English, math, science. Um, having more offers, offerings, or having some offerings at that, at that honors level class might help those kids that just can't handle five AP classes, which is, you gotta imagine, like 95% of them.
And are you saying though, that the standard level would suffice? That's what could be filling the gap for them?
I think so. I think that if we, uh, again, we have the, we write the, like IB gives us the framework. We write the curriculum within that framework work and make the decisions about how, here's the end goal. We decide how to get there. And that was kind of our intent as a department, was that this would be that middle ground for us to find, like, you know, for the student who wants the, you know, higher level. It was like not higher level, but that, that next step, of course, but maybe isn't ready for the, you know, the workload that comes with the AP 11 or the English HL 11.
Yeah. I mean, to me, it just seems like this is a half step down from that maybe, but not like the rigor of this class, like from reading online ahead of time, just trying to do some research. It seems like the rigor of this class is, is more than what a standard honors level class would be. I mean, is that a fair assessment?
I think that's going to depend on how the class is implemented.
Yeah.
I know how, how it's implemented. But I think the other larger point that you just drew previously is we do have so many students that make the choice to really load up on AP IB blended, whatever you want to call it, many, many high level classes. So a typical FID student could say, A day is, is my light day, B day is my tougher day. We see all around us now, students that have both on the A day and on the B day, high intensity, highly rigorous classes. And it can get quite stressful. Um, I do like the idea of giving students another option that allows them to sort of lighten that load. Especially a student that chooses to double up in science and chooses to double up in math. Because they have, they might have a, a pre-med path that they feel so very strongly about. And certainly we want them to take all the opportunities that we were able to give. But at the end of the day, I know that students are very conscious about prepping for college and what colleges will see and what they're sharing of themselves. But we also want to make sure that we are helping kids be well and, and emotionally healthy and balanced. So a-adding a course to the department that allows them to do that for, you know, the other half of high school, I think has a lot of value. So I'm glad you mentioned that. We certainly worry about the kids that overload quite a bit.
So that, that was well said. Um, actually, kind of, that's what I was going to say. Before moving forward with this, I'd like to see a side-by-side consideration of, of a, a straight up honors level, 11th grade, 12th grade, English offering um, with, with this um, IB language and literature SL. And maybe you can mix it where, where 12th grade is the, the SL. And then we still have the honors level in the 11th grade, something like that. But I'd like to see those two options uh, presented because we've, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to fill both. And uh, and so gotta, gotta hit that right. Um, and, and here, like, the, these are great arguments for this uh, standard level course. However, I'd like to see the same level of, of like thought uh, being taken on looking at just a pure honors course, so that we have some options to decide from.
What do you mean, like? What do you mean by that? Like, how would we? Cause again, the way the department has envisioned this is that this, this is an honors law. If we were to write an honors level course, would like, what would be the difference? It would be.
We'll, we'll, I'll let you determine that, but it's not weighted as an honors level course. So in that sense, it's not an honors level course. It's an IB AP level course.
So we, I don't think that anybody decided on the, the grading or weighting of it. I do understand the, the constraints there, because we have other IB courses and other departments that are weighted as such. And I, I get that and I hear you. But um, I think if we had to envision a perfect honors level course, this would probably be it. And the reason being, they have done an enormous amount of work, their, the IB people. Um, their professional development, development is like insanely beyond anything that I've ever experienced for professional development. It's awesome. Um, it transformed my way of teaching. Um, and I think that this course um, proposal is far reaching beyond even just our IB courses. Um, this, the training that, you know, a few teachers, depending on what our financial um, availability is, would receive is going to reach beyond just this course. The benefits are, are for the kids. The teachers will benefit from it. The school scheduling wise will benefit from it. Um, and I totally agree with you that the weighting in the grades need to be discussed. But I think if we had to envision a perfect honors level course, it would be incorporating um, the same skills that IB is asking of their um, language and literature SL students.
And you don't think it would be easier either on kids at an honors level?
Than an honors level course? No. Or not, not more. I think they were asking if it would be more difficult.
The rigor? Yeah, if you asked us to design an honors level English course, it would, I think it would be at the same level of, of rigor as what we're proposing for the, the SL course. That's what, like, that's where my confusion lies. It just seems like we're just, we're, we would design a very similar course, but then just call it something different.
Yeah, yeah. And it'd be weighted as an honors course and it wouldn't have the um, um, the two exams that I think are graded by outside uh, organization. So it would be absent that.
I think it, I think you'd have to really think about doing something like that. And, and I think there's two reasons. Number one, um, you know, when colleges look at a student's um, transcript, they're looking first, first thing that they look at is the quality of courses that students take. And so while it may seem um, you know, uh, good that a student is taking an honors level course, when they compare students from um, schools, including the same high school, and they see an honors course versus an IB course, regardless of its SL, HL, whatever it is, AP, there, that, that um, that AP IB or AP course is always gonna look better than that honors level course. That's just true, regardless of. That's just true. Regardless of, you know, what the intent is of that course or how rigorous. The IB label is going to, um, is just going to look better. So we could create an honors course that has the same type of content or, you know, what have you. But, um, that IB course is always going to look better. Um, and I think you always want to make sure that what we are offering. Is gonna, um, be appealing to those college level admissions people. I think the other thing is that we want to stay away from, you know, in terms of our equity, um. You know, our, our plans to have a certain level of equity, um, in our, the way that we do things, our equity plan. In terms of creating more levels. So we have, right now, we have like a college level, we have the, um, the IB level and AP. The more, the more levels that we create, the further away than we get from, I think. Levels of, uh, uh, having equity in our systems.
But, but honors exists in, at Fitch, right? In, in lower.
Not, not from our, not in our English department.
Yeah, ninth and tenth, ninth and tenth grade.
But not at the upper levels, from what I understand.
Right. And that, so we, I guess we're gonna.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna have to, um, gonna have to, um, yeah, bring this to a close quickly. We've got another meeting in a minute. So I guess from my point of view right now, I'd like to see what the board feels and, um, maybe we can talk about that as a board. Quickly, because I, I, I see a, a larger decision here on, and, and your point is well taken on what's offered. But I think that, um, you know, our boards have made a lot of comments, like we're looking, we're looking for that honors level or kind of a mid-level class. Where at least on the waiting, this doesn't seem like that. So, um, at least a little bit more thought. On that from, from my end.
Can I just, can I get that when we, sorry, Susan?
No, that's right. Go on.
Sorry. Can I just ask that when the board does consider this, that we think about whether or not it's the waiting we're concerned with, or we are concerned with. Filling a, a very large gap, in my opinion, of what our students need. I don't know that it's the distinction of a name. Shakespeare once said, what's in a name? Remember that? I don't think that that's what. It is of the utmost concern. So I just would like to consider that. This course, and as we've stated, is something that we would design as such. Regardless, it would look so similar to this if the English department designed it. So I just want that to be remembered when you talk to the board leader.
I, I'd say, instead of bringing it to the board, we just bring it back next month, curriculum meeting.
Yeah.
We can do that?
Yeah.
I think that sounds like a good idea. Maybe bring back some more information with regard to the waiting and have a discussion, maybe. Jess, in your department would be helpful to kind of get a sense.
All right. Um, all right. So can I bring to the next item? Cause we gotta get, gotta get rolling here. Review of the referral tracking sheet. I looked at it. It looks okay.
It, it looks good, but I would like to have our next agenda, I have something from the referral list on it, so that we actually.
All right. We're partially on the, on, um, on a review of English Language Arts Curriculum six to twelve. So. We won't call it completed, but it's, I guess in that track.
But, but as, as an agenda item, just like, but that's what I want, like through the year, us to pare down our referrals, like having as an agenda item.
Maybe we could add, um, a meeting in here and there if we need to, to, to try to get through the referral list. All right. So, um.
That's us.
So you're saying.
Then, um. With your meeting topics. So figure out a way to, to work on this referral, try referrals list here.
Okay.
By the board in future meetings. Future meeting topics, that's the referrals sheet. So, um, can I take a motion for?
I'll, I move to adjourn.
All right. Second. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you for the conversation. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it.